Everyone, tonight is Tuesday, September 17th, 2019. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Fitchburg City Council meeting. Call tonight's meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I would ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves to the record now by standing and stating their name and address. Is there any such person? Seeing none, Counselor Squalia, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
President Kusmerick.
Present.
Counselor Boishman.
Here.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
Here.
Counselor Donnelly.
Here.
Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Squalia.
Present.
Counselor Walsh.
Here.
Counselor Zarella.
Here.
Public forum. Anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you are here addressing public hearing petitions, you'll have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number which you are addressing. Does anyone wish to speak at this time? Seeing none, if there are no objections from counselors, we'll now hear an oral report of the Appointments Committee, which met earlier this evening on September 17th, 2019, and took up the following matters. Reappointments of the Conservation Commission for terms to expire January 1st, 2022, for Ms. Tracy Bet-Sarfield and Mr. Harry Karas. That was unanimous. New appointments for the Human Rights Commission, terms to expire September 1st, 2022, of Mr. Jamie Darkangelo and Mr. Adam Stone. Those were both approved unanimously. Fitchburg Redevelopment Authority for term to expire September 1st, 2024, of Mr. Jared Roy. That was approved unanimously. For the Fitchburg Cultural Council, term to expire September 1st, 2022, of Mr. Seen C. Goodlett. That was approved unanimously. The Conservation Commission, September 1st, 2022, expiration of Ms. Mary Halene. That was approved unanimously. And for a permanent reserve police officer, Mr. Timothy J. Roy.
Stewart.
Wow. Sorry. I apologize. Of Mr. Timothy J. Stewart. That was approved unanimously. At this time, I'd like to also invite Captain Hess up front to introduce the permanent reserve police officer candidate before us.
Good evening, counselors.
Good evening.
Captain Harry Hess here, representing the Police Department. As mentioned at the earlier committee, I have with me, to my left, your right, Mr. Timothy Stewart. He is a lifelong resident of the city of Fitchburg. He's a graduate of both Fitchburg High School and Mount Wachusett Community College, where he received his degree in criminal justice. He completed all the pre-employment steps earlier this year, including finishing the Reserve Interminute Police Academy that is conducted down in Boylston, Mass. He is employed by our department as a full-time civilian police dispatcher at the present time. And he still lives in the city of Fitchburg with his wife and two children. And we are quite happy to have him come on board with our department as a reserve police officer.
Motion for the Appointments Committee report to be accepted and the appointments confirmed.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the Appointments Committee report and confirm the appointments. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries. We'll now conduct a swearing-in, and I'd ask our other appointees to hang around for one moment until after this swearing-in. Congratulations. Sorry on the name thing.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Please raise your hand in this afternoon to take notice. I solemnly promise and swear.
I solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all duties.
Form and discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a permanent reserve police officer.
As a permanent reserve police officer.
For the city of Fitchburg.
For the city of Fitchburg.
So, all we got.
Thank you.
Smile. There you go.
Very good.
So, we have a whole host this evening of individuals, both reappointments and new appointments, to a variety of commissions, councils, and authorities throughout the city. And really just incredibly humbling to see the resumes and credentials of the people who want to serve the city that they love and live in. So, all of those new and reappointments, I'd just ask that you stand and be acknowledged. And I want to thank you on behalf of the city of Fitchburg. Wonderful. Thank you all. We'll now return to the agenda. Now, I ask for a report from the Committee on Records. Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have reviewed the records and they appear to be in order. Move that the Committee on Records report be accepted.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report from the Committee on Records. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. I see Counselor Zarella laughing because we can be doing this by unanimous consent. Next, we have communications from His Honor, the Mayor, which we can take by unanimous consent. If there are no objections, we have reappointment letters of Mr. David Madigan, as a member of the Board of Park Commissioners, term to expire April 1st, 2024. And for Mr. Adrian Ford, as a member of the Human Rights Commission, to expire May 1st, 2022. As well as a new appointment of Ms. Hafsa Ahmed Azwa, of a member of the Human Rights Commission, for a term to expire October 1st, 2022. And next, we'll go to the Finance Committee, oral report. Counselor Deanna Tally.
Finance Committee met on...
The motion we set 212 to...
21.
221. 222-19.
We need a roll call vote on 222.
221-19.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Motion carries.
Move to adopt non-order 222-19.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adopt 222-19 by roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Squalia?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Zarella?
Yes.
President Kusmerick?
Yea.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Deanna Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Donnelly?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Caddy?
Yes.
It was unanimous.
It's unanimous. Motion carries. Recession hearing. 2919, Fitchburg Planning Board to amend the Fitchburg zoning ordinance by amending the Table of Principal Uses Concerning Medical Offices and to further define different medical and medical office use per vote of the Fitchburg Planning Board, January 8th, 2019. I hereby declare the hearing resumed. With us, we have Mr. Skorowski and an attorney, Pusiteri, who are presenting.
You will.
It's up to you. You can stay at that seat.
I'm going to let Tom present, and if there's any questions.
Sure. Counselor, okay.
I have a question. Wait.
Okay.
I'll be brief. So, the original memo that was submitted on behalf of Chairpersons Karen and Fontaine basically described the long and winding road related to this whole process. A petition was originally submitted to have the Planning Board consider whether or not we should be separating various types of medical uses from the use table. And this, basically through various iterations, the Planning Board's been working with my office, with the city solicitor's office, and just trying to figure out different ways we could go about solving for what we could do to essentially regulate particular uses within the medical office field. And those really stem from issues related to the volume of patients, chronic treatment that takes place in certain facilities, security for patients, providers, and the medication that might be stored in certain types of medical office facilities, the likelihood of emergency services being needed, and then supervised administration of medication. So, those are sort of the main conditions that we wanted to consider, whether or not there was a need to treat those differently within the ordinance, because they really do present different challenges for the neighborhood, the economic development environment, public safety, all the things that a special permit is to really solve for. So, basically, at the end of the day, Planning Board came up with four alternatives. Two of them, after consultation with Attorney Pusiteri, were not deemed to be viable options. And what they had remaining were two options. And if you actually flip to the back of the memo that I gave you all earlier today, apologies on the lateness of it. I think I just sort of realized the original memo you got from the Planning Board could use some more clarification, so that's why I sent this along. But basically, these are the options. Option number one is really the status quo, just the current use table, which regulates business or professional office, including medical. And anytime you see a yes, that use is allowed by right. That means you go in front of no permitting body to get any sort of approval. Potential change, option A, would actually separate medical office uses out and would allow it in central business district and/or neighborhood business district by a special permit, either from the Planning Board or from the ZBA. Ultimately, the Planning Board decided they didn't want to go that route because they, you know, figured rightfully so. There's a lot of other medical office uses that they didn't want to necessarily be business unfriendly to a whole slew of medical uses to solve for a certain few conditions, if you will. Potential change, option B, then separates even further still the different medical uses and basically creates three subcategories, the latter of which is, again, allowed by special permit in central business district and neighborhood business district, not just by right. So, it's not really being prohibitive by nature. It's just saying that a permit would be needed and we would need to go in front of a permitting body for any type of medical use that offers treatment options to a patient. So, ultimately, again, it's not dissimilar to what we've done with a variety of different business types throughout the city, including, you know, recreational cannabis, of which we have numerous special permits that come in front of the Planning Board and my office on a weekly basis. You know, special permits are par for the course. They're just a way to ensure that we're meeting the neighborhood and economic development conditions. So, whatever development does happen in a given space happens in a way that pays respect to the character and nature of that neighborhood. And that's really the gist of it. So, ultimately, they decided that option was a little bit too complicated and complex. And they just sort of thought maybe the council could decide whether any of those three options or some combination thereof might be a more appropriate way to tackle this issue. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Counselor Deanna Tally.
Thank you. Option A, you know, upon reading that they deemed it to be business unfriendly, that was not an option that I was wishing to entertain. Option B is the option I am willing to entertain, only because option A is flat-out considered not friendly to business. But I wanted a little more expansion on the comment about the board's feeling that it would be complex and confusing. So, in order, in every case, whether it's allowed by right or by a special permit, the building department is front and center on this, are they not?
Correct.
So, this would essentially be up to the building commissioner to determine which tier these four medical office designations fall under?
Correct. And actually, three designations. There's medical office and the three beneath it.
Yes, I'm sorry, three. So, is it spelled out in the ordinance or in the, is it going to be spelled out exactly what would constitute these three different sections, so the building department will know where it falls under?
Correct. So, there would be definitions that would, in turn, also need to be added to the zoning ordinance.
So, I'm just trying to understand, where would the confusion lie? The confusion would lie on the business owner's end, right, to know what it is they're applying for?
Yeah. I think the more we can create sort of a simple streamlined table of uses, the simpler it is for anyone to, you know, look at a zoning table and recognize, okay, here's where my business falls. It's not a deal breaker at the end of the day. And maybe I'm not quite mischaracterizing, but not giving you the full rationale behind the Planning Board sending this back to the council. I think the other piece of it, aside from thinking this is a bit complex, they realized, okay, at the end of the day, city council's going to make this decision, and they've got some options to choose from. You know, better to give the options, letting them know the different circumstances they must weigh when they make the final decision, as opposed to saying, well, this is the one. And then perhaps council would go in a different direction entirely. So, I think they just wanted to take a measured approach, give you a couple different options to choose from, and sort of give you the cons of each. But I think by and large, they seem more receptive to option B. Option A was pretty much a non-starter.
Yeah. So, I'm, my preference is option B as well. I'm just wrestling with whether 17A and 17B can't be combined, and therefore you just have one or another. There's one group that involves actual treatment of patients, and there's one group that does not.
So, I think the thought process there, and originally, we had four, and I'm, again, trying to simplify it the best I can. If one were to look at orthodontal or dental arts, for example, I can speak unauthority, just having come from the dentist yesterday, they do quite a bit of treatment. So, if, then basically, you're separating, it's not all other medical uses, comma, treatment, necessarily, because a bunch of the uses within A are treatment in and of themselves. So, I think that was sort of the thought process. But...
Okay, I understand. I'm just trying to get clarity on their thought process. So, I, for me, I was immediately partial to option B. I think the confusion, the complexity, will work itself out through the building department's determination and then through the planning or ZBA to iron that out. I just want to make sure that the confusion or complexity doesn't so much hit the prospective business client, business owner, that when they come before the city for a permit...
Right.
Whether it's just by right or through a special permit, they understand what they have to provide the city in terms of clarity as to their business plan, so we can then determine what, which one of the three tiers it falls under.
Yeah.
So, I didn't really understand how, why it would be complex or confusing per their input. That's why I asked if it was more on the business owner's end versus the city's end.
Right.
Because if there's a list of criteria that meets each one of these for the building department to follow...
Right.
The confusion shouldn't really rest with the city. It would kind of rest with the business owner. And I don't want that, but I think when they come in for a prospective, as a prospective client, they'll be told...
Right. And the onus will be on us to be clear and straightforward. Yeah. I think from a city perspective, municipal, you know, officials, building commissioner myself, we feel pretty good about that second interpretation and being able to make it.
Okay. My option, my vote would be for option B. That's just my put on that. Thank you.
Counselor Zarella.
Thank you. I'm also initially inclined towards option B. I think requiring a permit for all medical office uses is probably a bit too stringent, given that that would include things like physical therapy or something like that, where it's not from a neighborhood perspective, meaningfully different from any other walk-in business.
Yes. Yeah, she is.
So, I did want to ask, just to clarify, Mr. Solicitor, is it correct to assume that where it says SP here, that would be swapped out for either a BA or a PB?
Yes.
I assume a BA, because that's what we normally do with these things, but for anyone else, that's just, right now, it just says a special permit will be required. We need to know which of the two boards is going to.
Right. And if I could just, when creating this, it struck me that in all of our conversations with the board, we never actually decided where the permit would come from. So, it felt like I needed to probably send that to you all as well. Didn't want to take that leap.
Okay. All right. Yeah. And as far as complexity goes, I think if the definitions are well drafted, which I'm sure they will be, then there's no reason it has to be confusing. And I think certainly my board, and I assume the Planning Board as well, would be certainly willing to take on the level of complexity that it appears would be involved here in order to clarify this.
Counselor Green.
When we decided that we were going to allow or have eight cannabis facilities in our community, did we not already set aside the areas where those were going to potentially be located?
Initially, we set aside two areas, at least for medical dispensaries. Once things opened up to recreational, it, in effect, became anywhere that is, any commercial retail business of any kind is allowed. So, the, it went from two areas in the north, or in the west and east of town, basically, in and around the Wachusett Station and around the airport, and in effect, became everywhere in the city that's owned commercial.
Or industrial.
Correct.
By right?
By special permit.
Okay. And we've issued five of those, or we have host agreements with five of those facilities now?
Retail.
Retail. Okay. So, and this includes those facilities, correct? So, the decisions that we make by granting this recommendation from the Planning Board would affect any and all of those facilities?
Great question. They, actually, this would be separate entirely. So, those have a separate definition in the zoning ordinance as, I'm blanking on the technical terminology, but for all intents and purposes, recreational marijuana dispensing and manufacturing. So, they're separate. This would not, those would not fall under this.
Okay. Is this recommendation, then specifically, I'll use my business, it is located in a neighborhood district, and it is chiropractic care with consultation, treatment, other medical treatments being offered? So...
You're a pre-existing non-conformative use and would not be affected by this, and that's why we don't think we have a conflict of interest.
Okay. And that's what I was getting at, because I was like, oh, my God, if this affects my business in any way, I will just have to recuse myself. But I did want to just point out that when we're looking at this chart, and because the viewing audience, as of right now, doesn't see the chart, can you just refresh my memory on BA, what that refers to in some of these categories?
So...
The zoning board, Board of Appeals.
Oh, oh, right. Board of Appeals and then...
Okay.
And a special permit would be available by request of the zoning board of appeals.
Okay. So, we've got yes, allowed, no, not allowed, allowed, but they would have to, they would have to go through the ZBA, zoning board of appeals.
Or the Planning Board, if it were PB on that chart.
Okay. Or the SP is now for special permit. If, are we going to change that, though, potentially in the next chart?
It would be either BA or PB, depending on what the council thought would be the appropriate body to adjudicate these matters.
And that is on that 17C, all other medical office use and treatments?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome. And at the end of the day, it's the same permit, just a different body issuing that permit. They're reviewing the same criteria.
And how involved is the Board of Health in this process with dealing with medical treatment facilities?
Have not been entirely involved in that. This is primarily, I guess, aligned use consideration, and we've certainly discussed the idea of them in passing, but I wouldn't say they've been integrally involved in the creation of this ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselors, just before we continue, I just had a quick sidebar with the city solicitor. I just want to remind folks, too, that we're having a kind of a citywide look at our zoning throughout the entire city. And so, we'll have a massive set of new recommendations that'll come back before us. So, this is essentially, this is that interim period between now and when that gets done. So, just keep that in mind today as we're going through. We're setting a new process. We're really setting a new process for about nine months, and then they'll be coming back to us with best practices and recommendations for how that will be. So, as we kind of look at, you know, it's been talked about, well, where are those SPs going to go and the, you know, to Board of Appeals or to the Planning Board? Again, we'll have recommendations and then take, I'm going to call it nine months, when it comes back to us. If for some reason it's not the right body, or both bodies have input as to how the process is going, we can adjust as we go there, too.
Right.
So, you shouldn't feel like this is, once we set this, this is set in stone and the poor zoning board is stuck with this for the rest of time. That's not necessarily the case, as this is affectionately being referred to as a Band-Aid until we have a more permanent set of recommendations before us. It said, Counselor Squalia.
So, the existing, right now, is business or professional office, including medical, is allowed by right in the central business district and the neighborhood business district. So, the potential change for option A, separate out completely medical office and only allow that by special permit, that I certainly would be against that. That, I've heard many stories and complaints about the special permit process in the city of Fitchburg being cumbersome and long and drawn out. And I would think for every medical office, that would not be conducive to being open for business in the city of Fitchburg. So, when it comes to option B, it now defines it a little more clearly with orthodontal, dental arts, ophthalmology, podiatry, chiropractic care, and then it just separates consultation and treatment. Without seeing the definitions of what consultation and treatment specifically describe, I would not be inclined to vote for option B, because sometimes the devil is in the details. And, you know, I think in order for us to specifically regulate a few businesses, a few uses of medical office, we are limiting many other potential medical offices. So, if we are voting tonight without the definitions of what treat, what defines treatment or consultation, then I would be voting to keep it the way it is. I would think that perhaps in the definition process, we can more define what treatment is. Maybe it's outpatient clinic treatment is specifically by special permit. And then we can more define all the different uses of medical offices, so that there is no complexity or confusion in the use table. Thank you.
Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you. Question. MS stands for medical services.
Correct.
Is this the whole chart for medical services?
Um...
Like, I'm leading up the question is, my understanding is that there's supposed to be something as a matter of right.
Right.
I don't see anything as a matter of right in medical services. Everything is Planning Board.
So, that's just, basically, the, it looks as though it is a number of cases where Planning Board is allowable only through special permit here. But in reality, all I did was just took what was the existing condition for medical services district for offices, and I just copied and pasted it down.
But I don't see anything where it's a matter of right.
Right.
It's the medical services only. If you're resident C, you can build a three-family house, or two-family house or one, matter of right. It's supposed to be for zoning, like when they did the strip clubs. You have to have a place where a matter of right, you come in, you don't, you apply, you say what you want to do, and you have a matter. Something has to have a matter of right in the zoning.
I'll ask city solicitor Pusiteri to answer this.
So, if we...
So, I don't need to change your definition now, but my understanding is you're supposed to have a matter of right to do something.
is you're supposed to have a matter of right to do something in a particular zoning. So, I think that should be addressed. The other part is S, if you go before the zoning board, you're not gonna get a variance, you're not gonna get a use variance, where it says Board of Appeals, it's gonna be a special permit. So, it should, to me, it should say SP Board of Appeals or SP Planning Board. The SP, that gets confusing, 'cause every one of these things is SP, special permit. So, if somebody comes in, they wanna do something, is it their option to go to either the planning board or the zoning board? Or, I mean, why is there an either or?
Well, I, again, it was only because in, in the planning board meetings, we never actually discussed which body would administer the special permit. So, I was actually bringing that to the council for, for you all to consider and decide whether it should be a planning board item or Board of Appeals. Frankly, if, if you all are agnostic and would just like it to be planning board, I'm happy to take it on, but we never actually discussed in those planning board meetings which the body would be that would review it.
Under the workload that the zoning Board of Appeals has right now, I think it'd be wise to go to the planning board, because they get on at midnight sometimes. But, I, I just, unless there's another logic. But, they're all gonna be special permits. Now, if somebody wants to put one of these things in, uh, residency or residence B, they would have to go to the ZBA and try to get a variance. But, everything else is SP. I don't think it should say SP on whatever board they go to, but I still think there should be something that has a, has a matter of right. They, there should be something allowed. Other than that, then Pittsburgh has to wrap. It's difficult to do business in Pittsburgh.
So, just to note, it, aside from 17C, um, 17A and B is allowed by right in not only CBD and MBD, but CNA, LI, I, and FSC. Um, 17C, although allowed only by special permit conceivably in central business and neighborhood business district, is allowed by right in CNA, LI, I, and FSC. So, there are five areas it would be allowed by right, even within this existing definition. So, again, I think it's really important to note, we are permitting it in a variety of areas, and in a couple areas, just saying, well, given the conditions of the neighborhood, we should take this through a permit, so we can look at how the project fits within the, um, fabric.
I'm a little confused, it's more, it's easier to get it into the FSC zoning than it is to get it into medical services.
Right.
Everything is yes in that area, and planning board approval in, in an area that I would think be more dedicated to medical services.
Counselor Donnelly, I believe, uh, Counselor Zarella may be able to add some substance, if you'd like to yield your, your, uh, we, yield the floor to, uh, are you amenable to-
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Counselor Zarella.
Uh, so, there's a number of things that, that have come up in the past few minutes that I'd like to clarify, uh, because it can get confusing if you don't deal with these tables very often. First of all, the medical services district has many, many, many more lines in the full table than this. This is just two lines of the medical services district column. It's, uh, something like a thirty, forty-some-odd-line table. Um, so, there are things that are allowed by right in the medical services district. Also, if I'm not mistaken, I don't do much with the MS district, it's mostly zoned for larger medical services uses, like hospitals and things like that, which is why it's so heavily permitted, because it's not just for anything medical-related, it's for hospitals and stuff. Um, the, where you see BA or PB on, anywhere in the chart, that is a special permit by definition. It's defined at the top of the chart, which isn't on this page. If, if it's a variance, it'll say N, and then it has to come to the Board of Appeals to grant a variance. If it says BA, that means it comes to us for a special permit. Um, and then, the other two things, uh, well, actually, no, I'll, I'll wait until I actually have my turn, because they're not germane to what you were just saying.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Counselor Walsh.
I concur with what, uh, Counselor Gina Tally and Counselors Zarella said earlier. I, I think that the option A, the, the not business-friendly part of it caught my attention right off the bat, and, you know, I, I think that we need to make sure that, that if we're gonna do something, that it, that it remains business-friendly. I think that the, um, option B is the, the option that I would prefer. I just have a question, if, if the definitions are gonna be, um, created, or, or these terms are gonna be defined, are those definitions gonna come back before the city council for their approval as well?
The ordinance would have to come back before you, and we'll go through three readings.
So, so we would have an opportunity at that time to, to address any issues that we would have with those? Okay, thank you. I have, I would, I would approve option B.
Counselor Catty.
Tom, if we were to, what, what are you asking us to do tonight with this? Are you asking us to choose one of the options?
Basically, to choose one of the options and then allow the city solicitor's office to prepare a, a draft ordinance for, if I'm-
That'll, that'll come back to us-
Right.
-with the definitions on it. And then, if, we'll have the opportunity to vote again with the def, and does it, is this going through a third, three readings?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Counselor Gina Tally.
Yeah, I mean, on, onto the definitions side, this is, this is part of the process. This is a petition format, um, that is required to go through in order to the, for the ordinance to get drafted, where all the nuts and bolts are identified. So, we're just outlaying the outline. We're doing the outline here. The details are coming later, and we'll have multiple opportunities to look over those details and amend those details if we so choose. So, I think what this is tonight is just to give the solicitor guidance on what ordinance he should draft based on the options before us, and then we will look at what was drafted, and then we will get into the details at that time. So, um, that's all. Thank you.
Uh, in, in, Counselors, certainly, we're not, you know, while we don't wanna leave anything hanging on the agenda in perpetuity, once we get to the point where we have the definitions in front of us, uh, i- if we need to amend or we need to discuss further, we can always even hold it, um, or we can, we can amend further, send it back to the city solicitor for further refinement, um, before, before bringing it back before us. So, we'll, we'll take our time and be as judicious as we need to before we ultimately, um, uh, do a third and final reading. Uh, that said, Counselor Zarella.
Thank you. Um, so, I was going to mention the part about the definitions as well. Uh, we will, this is not a vote on an ordinance, this is just a vote to send something to the city solicitor's office. Um, the last thing I wanted to clarify, just because it's been raised by a few colleagues, uh, is the question of medical marijuana. There is in the zoning ordinance sort of a catch-all term, uh, in the section that has this table, that says that any use, or rather, yeah, any use is categorized according to the strictest category it falls into. So, if medical marijuana would fall into the medical marijuana table line as well as, uh, medical offices' treatment, it would be zoned and permitted as medical marijuana. What we're doing here wouldn't affect it, um, unless we were to, for some reason, make it stricter than our existing medical marijuana permitting process.
Counselors, that exhausts the, uh, Counselor Green.
I just have one request that, um, in the definition or the table of definitions that are gonna be provided, will you just provide us the, um, even at the top, RR, RA1, 2, and all those, just to familiarize ourselves with what, what the definition of all that is?
We can absolutely request the, the legend to, to be included on there.
Motion to send option B to the city solicitor.
Second.
Uh, so, Counselors, we need to close the, the public hearing, so, uh, Mr. Skrausky, I'll ask you to vacate the center table for a moment. Uh, I'd ask if there's anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? If all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed.
Motion to send option B to the solicitor.
Second.
So, uh, Counselors, we'll need it to be, uh, approve, uh, with option B, uh, and then it would then go to the city solicitor.
Motion to approve option B and send it to the solicitor.
I have a motion and second to approve, um, uh, the petition with option B. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? One in opposition. Uh, Counselor Squalia, uh, the matter carries ten to one. Now, resuming to, uh, the agenda, orders, finance.
Two thirty-one nineteen, move two thirty-one nineteen and two thirty-two nineteen, be sent to-
Actually, could we suspend the rules on two thirty-one nineteen?
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on two thirty-one nineteen. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, the matter is before you.
To approve two thirty-one nineteen.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve two thirty-one nineteen. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries.
Move the suspension on two thirty-two ten.
Second.
We can do that under suspension, correct?
Yeah.
I have a motion and second for suspension on two thirty-two, uh, ten. Uh, speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Uh, it is unanimous.
To amend two thirty-two ten to read two thirty-two nineteen.
Thank you, Counselor. I have a motion, uh, to amend two thirty-two, uh, ten to two thirty-two nineteen. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Uh, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, and second, uh, as amended, two thirty-two nineteen. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Ordinance two twenty-six nineteen, an ordinance to amend the general ordinance of the city of Pittsburgh, Chapter Forty-four, Section Ten, by striking the following under positions paid yearly city solicitor, uh, and assistant city solicitor inserting in its place, under positions paid yearly, city solicitor, um, uh, one hundred thousand dollars and, uh, one thousand nine hundred thirty-seven, uh, and eighty-eight, uh, cents weekly, and assistant city solicitor to sixty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars, uh, which is one thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents weekly. Uh, that's the final reading.
Motion to send the ordinance to its third and final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send two twenty-six nineteen to its third and final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised. Speaking in the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous, motion carries. Um, Counselors, just a, a quick, uh, a quick announcement preliminary, uh, the preliminary election for Ward Three will be held on Tuesday, September twenty-fourth. Polls open at seven AM and close at-
Eight.
-eight PM, uh, and it will be held at-
Memorial.
-Memorial, uh, Middle School. Um, hope folks, uh, from Ward Three, uh, turn out, uh, next, uh, next Tuesday. Uh, further announcements, Counselor Walsh?
Uh, the Friends of Cogswalt Park are having their one hundred and twenty-fifth year anniversary celebration at the Stone House on September nineteenth. Uh, the event is catered by Slatteries. Uh, the, it starts from at five o'clock and runs till eight o'clock. Uh, it's, uh, fifty dollars, and, uh, that money goes to the Friends of Cogswalt Park.
Counselor Squalia.
The Fourth Annual Pittsburgh Citywide Yard Sale is happening this weekend, Saturday, September twenty-first, and Sunday, Septem- um, September twenty-second, from eight AM to two PM. You can see the map at fitchburgyardsale.com, and you can sign up your house at fitchburgyardsale@gmail.com. We have over forty addresses so far, and signing up up until Friday.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We adjourned. Thank you, Counselors.